Like to call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for January third, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy New Year. We're glad to have you here with us today. But before we go any farther into the into the agenda tonight, I just wanted to make a few comments on the events of December thirtieth in the tragic fire that took place in Superior Louisville, the Boulder area. So many lives were changed on that day, and we're we wanted to express our sincere sympathies with those who were affect who were personally affected or affected in any way to the Marshall or Middle Fork fires. Our thoughts and prayers are with you, and we pledge our support to to you in in as in to you in your communities as you go through this process and rebuild. We also wanted to thank all of the first responders and everyone who mobilized to provide support the last several days and into the next several weeks and months. But we also appreciate the efforts of the Arvada Police Department and the Arvada Fire Protection District for their emergency response coordination and going in helping in those communities where needed. But we just again are so sorry for the loss and for our friends and neighbors who live in those areas. But I know that other council members will have other things to say at the end of the meeting, but just wanted to share our thoughts collectively with you as we get started in tonight's meeting. So I'll turn the time over to Councilmember Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Jones. Let's take time now for a moment of silent reflection. Maybe hold our neighbors to the north, our friends and family and our thoughts for this during this time of reflection. And now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Ms. Rush, will you please do the roll call?
Mayor Williams. Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
To have a motion to excuse Mayor Williams, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make the motion to excuse Mr. Williams from tonight's business meeting.
Thank you. Do a roll call, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yes.
Mr. Marriott.
Yes.
Mr. Mormon.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
And Ms. Smith.
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the mayor is absent on vacation. We wish him the very best. And so we will excuse him from tonight's meeting. Next, we have the presentation of the minutes for the City Council Business Meeting dated December sixth. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? All right, seeing none, those minutes will stand as presented. Next, we have the recognition that Mr. Marriott will do for Bryce Winslow.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. It gives me immense pleasure and honor to congratulate Bryce Winslow on completing all the necessary requirements to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. It's a matter of huge respect, and it's a very proud moment for all of us in the city of Arvada to have such a talented and hardworking person in our community. The amount of hard work and dedication it takes to reach this level is exceptional. Bryce's project was to lead a team to construct a communication board that provides students with disabilities and an alternate form of communication, both in the school and in the playground. Communication board holds laminated images to which the student can point or otherwise indicate something they want or need. An image may show a toilet, a drinking fountain, or someone being pushed on a swing or something like that. It took a few days for Bryce's team to cut and assemble the pieces, and then his artistically inclined older sister painted it with the school's colors and mascot. It is great to hear that with all the choices a young person has to make, good or bad, you have chosen a path that will help you become the best person you can be. We want to congratulate you, Bryce, and commend you for your efforts. We want to encourage you to stay on this road and pursue all your dreams and goals. You are an inspiration for many young scouts. Being awarded with the badge of Eagle Scout is a matter of great pride and honor that you will remember for the rest of your life. Please keep up the good work in serving in our community, and congratulations on your achievement. And we have a certificate of recognition, Bryce, for you that is signed by the mayor and all members of council and dated this third day of January, two thousand and twenty-two. And Bryce, if you wouldn't mind, I'd love it if you'd take yourself off mute and please tell us a couple of words about yourself and your project. And again, once again, congratulations from all of City Council as well as Mayor Williams.
So hello to everyone. My name is Bryce Winslow. I'm nineteen years old, and I graduated from Pomona High School in two thousand and twenty, and that was also the year that I during the summer of two thousand and twenty is when I finished the Eagle Scout projects and earned my Eagle Scout badge. And during the December of two thousand and twenty-one, I was recognized and I got the Eagle Scout badge and created a ceremony that by troop participated in, Troop three twenty-four of Westminster.
Great. Well, Bryce, congratulations from all of us. Keep up the good work, and you have a very bright future in front of you, and you're certainly setting a great foundation for it today. So thanks, thanks again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott, and again, congratulations to Bryce. What a great accomplishment that you've made there. We'll move on now to presentations. There are no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. And just as a reminder, this is an opportunity for the public to address your city council. We always listen carefully to what you have to say, but we don't typically respond during these meetings. But we refer your your comments or your questions or concerns to our city team for further research and and resolution for sure on anything that's said. So Ms. Rush, do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
We do not.
All right. Well, then we will move on to the consent agenda. And the first item on the consent agenda is R twenty-two dash zero zero one, a resolution designating public place for the posting of notice and meetings for all boards, commissions, and committees of the city of the city council of the city of Arvada for the year two thousand and twenty-two. R twenty, R twenty-two dash zero zero two, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Peace Jam Foundation for the use of property known as the Allen House and located at one one two zero zero West sixty-fourth Avenue. And the final item on consent agenda tonight is R twenty-two dash zero zero three, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for the lease of a building at seventy-three oh five Grandview Avenue. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that resolutions R twenty-two dash zero zero one, R twenty-two dash zero zero two, and R twenty-two dash zero zero three all be approved.
Thank you. Motions for approval, Mr. Marriott.
Yes.
Mr. Mormon.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yes.
That motion passes with six to zero with Mayor Williams being excused. Next, we'll move on to our resolutions. Resolution, let's see here, let me make sure I've got this right here. Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero four, a resolution approving a subrecipient grant agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Protem and members of the council, this is an agreement that we are we are proposing for your consideration between the city and the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for the Corona state and local fiscal recovery funds, or S L F R F. I can't even pronounce that what that acronym would be, so I'm just gonna leave it at that. And this would be for a one-time allocation of five hundred thousand dollars to the Arvada Chamber. That would be expended between now and two thousand and twenty-four, which would be distributed as follows, three hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two, a hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-three, and a hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-four. What the chamber is proposing to do is to continue working with the business community in in association with the Arvada Resiliency Task Force and to continue looking at different needs that the business community has in order to continue to help the the certain sectors of our business community recover. This has been something that we have been doing with the chamber really since about March of two thousand and twenty. And I believe it's been very successful, and in fact, I think it's been a model for many communities to follow. This request was presented to us by the chamber and also in collaboration with our economic development team and also discussed with our leadership team and our finance director, Mr. Archer, and we are recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Ms. Rush, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to this resolution?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Any any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Marriott.
I would just make a motion if everyone is okay with that.
Okay, well, you can observe the motion. Mr. Pfeiffer, do you have?
Yeah, maybe you could. Somebody could explain a little bit more of how the funds would be used. I I hear generically what what it's an app, but maybe there's some more information that could be shared about how three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds will be used by the chamber and how does that govern. Daniel Wiley is here. Three hundred, and then it's a hundred and hundred. So it's five hundred total, but it's a lot of money, and and I hadn't seen anything that talks about governance and how it's to be used, and what what kind of uses would it be used for?
Daniel, would you please respond to that?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Pfeiffer, for the question. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Kami Welch. She is out of out of town this week, and so hopefully I can I can stand and answer your questions. And to that question, Councilman, the agreement that you've seen is really outlines some of the formalities around the use of the the federal funds, including small business assistance, aid to nonprofits, focusing on on travel, tourism, hospitality, and impacted industries, et cetera. But underneath that is a proposal that was created by the chamber in partnership with the Resiliency Task Force, which is really a continuation of the efforts and successes and measurable outcomes that we had been seeing through the Arvada Resiliency Task Force partnership and our support of the Arvada business community and nonprofit community through pandemic and the respective local health orders that that restricted certain business operations. To be a little bit more specific, what we focused on in this particular proposal was an opportunity to really invest in resiliency of the business community. The original funds that went out, there was a lot of cat direct cash assistance to businesses, if you remember. And there was a lot of PP, sorry, PPP types of activities, getting those types of materials to businesses, and there was mini grant programs that help businesses install different types of technology or or infrastructure to help them try to serve as many customers as possible. In this particular era, what we wanted to pursue were opportunities to help develop our local business communities and the owners of those businesses to be more sophisticated and more resilient in the the work that they're doing. And specifically, what we're looking at is areas like workforce development, as you are all aware. That is the number one concern of our business communities right now. Kind of the fallout from the pandemic has been the inability to find and attract and retain qualified talent for our small business community. And they're having a really hard time competing against their larger corporate businesses that that have a little bit more robust budgets and and access to different technologies and things like that. Abilities to pay higher wages and abilities to to offer more benefits and perks to attract those workers. Helping them continue to invest in technology that will that will improve their efficiency, so they rely less on the labor pool to get them through to a point where hopefully the market adjusts, and they could be a little bit more resilient in that respect as well. Continuing to invest in our very successful marketing efforts, which is where we saw very much the biggest bang for our buck during the CARES Act funds, we were very able to specifically measure every dollar that went into marketing and getting customers back into Arvada businesses. How that how that returned that investment to our community. Mental health and burnout is a very big one, too. I'm sure you're hearing that as well from our business communities, particularly our small business community, and it goes hand in hand with the workforce development and just the lack of of people to do the jobs that need to get done. And then really helping them navigate a new landscape of business regulations that they'll be facing, both from pandemic-related changes, health health-related changes, and additional non-pandemic-related legislation that's coming down from the state. And then, if possible, maybe there will be opportunities to address other concerns that the business community has mentioned as is in that resiliency bucket, including homelessness and and, you know, where their workers live and how how easy it is for those workers to get get to their businesses. So it's it's very broad, and there is opportunities within the proposal, too, to to maintain some flexibility, knowing that things continue to change in our community, a problem that we might be focusing on one month, and then the next thing you know, there's a different issue that's come about, and we're we're seeing that unfold just recently with with the tragic fires that took place in our neighboring communities. So really staying nimble with some of that funding as well. And that's part of the reason that that funding is going to be staggered, so that we can report back in compliance with the the regulatory guidance for the funds back to the city of Arvada, showing on a quarterly basis how that money is being invested and what those returns on investment are and what types of outcomes we are we are seeing. And then making sure that the city council and the city leadership feels very comfortable and confident continuing to fund these initiatives over the next four years.
So I appreciate, I mean, I don't get me wrong, I just half million dollars given to a chamber with no governance structure provided to council on the half million dollars. It I have to ask these questions. I mean, again, granted that ARPA has its own rule sets that have to be followed, so I I feel comfortable that you'll obviously have to adhere to those, how those funds are used by ARPA, but, you know, it is a broad stroke statement that you're you're making, and and what I what I start scratching my head as regardless of how these funds are done, taxpayers at the end of the day have to pay this out of their pocket eventually, or my kids will be. How do you measure outcomes? And how do you know you're successful? If you, you know, because there's not really a target. I don't hear any measurable outcomes or any, you know, other than reporting in compliance with ARPA. How do you know you're successful? Because I mean, I've talked to business owners, and yes, they are diverse in their concerns and issues. But I'm just trying to think of, I'm coming in front of a chamber board to access some money that, you know, says evidence-based, so hopefully, you know, your decision-making there is such. I just feel it's a little loose, and if there's more structure around it, it would be interesting of how funds are equally shared and fairly shared amongst the entire business and nonprofit. Because you do talk a lot about business, but ARPA money is for nonprofit, too, and I don't hear much of that coming from what you're explaining, or what is the chamber? Is there an earmark? Is there certain percentage going to our nonprofits? Because we're not a big tourism place, so I don't see a lot of money going there, but I'd be more interested in money that impacts our community more broadly, like the chamber can do in our small businesses. But equally so, our nonprofits are just as important, especially with mental health and other issues, not just for the workforce, but our community as a whole.
So thank you, Mr. Devon. Would you like me to to field that question as well?
Why don't you go ahead and start on the business-related items, and then I can maybe pick up on some of the issues associated with mental health and nonprofits.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And and I will say, too, that one of the the components that we are really leaning on for this is the partnership that the Resiliency Task Force has had for the last eighteen months with the city of Arvada, and really the trust and credibility and execution that that we feel has been reinforced and demonstrated through that partnership, as well as the the communications and and reporting. We have always really lumped in Arvada lumped our our nonprofits into that business mix. Because at the end of the day, even though their business model is different, as far as the way that they're pursuing profits through revenue, they are very much employers in our community, and they and they operate very much like a business does. And so we've always supported those nonprofits as business owners or or, you know, business executives in our community, including their workforce. We to to be, to answer this specific question, we don't have at this particular time any earmarks or metrics to say we're targeting a specific amount or percentage of nonprofits. However, what we want to do is look at those areas that I mentioned, including workforce development and mental health, marketing, regulatory things, and the types of programming that we want to build through this, and the types of resources and and investments. We want to measure them very much that like we always have been. So looking at participation of those those members of our business community, the subrecipient agreement does hold accountable various aspects of equity in our community, which will be adhered to as well. But really, what we'll be looking at is, depending on the specific programs that are created, we want to retain these businesses in our community, and that's the biggest metric that we looked at in outside of return on investment through the original phase of our our partnership through the Resiliency Task Force was overall these net amounts of active brick and mortar businesses and nonprofit entities in our community that were here before the pandemic and that are still here after the pandemic, as we believe they were able to benefit from the work that this task force was doing. And and as far as the chamber really being the recipient of this, they really are the ground zero fiscal, you know, leader for the task force. But really, this this partnership is the task force as a whole, and the chamber is is the steward of these resources and making sure that these are deployed in a very meaningful and measurable way. That's in alignment with our respective visions and and missions of our organizations, primarily being the city of Arvada as one of those members of the task force, Arvada Economic Development Association as the the other and and the chamber. So making sure that there is good guidance and stewardship and accountability from the task force. And again, we're really leaning on the history that we've had throughout the last eighteen months for that for that credibility.
So, Daniel, does the task force have oversight with this money, or is it just the chamber?
Yes, it does by way of myself. So I, through the the subrecipient agreement, there is kind of a monitor, project manager, if you will, which will be me really holding the chamber accountable for how the money gets used and being really the co-chair alongside Kami on the task force gives me a lot of of great context for that role. And then, obviously, our our finance team and our risk team and the city leadership, it will be very close to the fold in in that monitoring process as well as city council as we report on that quarterly basis.
And and sorry, we'll get to you here in a minute, Mark. So, Daniel, does does I'm assuming that they don't have to be chamber members or anything like that. This is just a clearinghouse or, like you said, stewardship that is shepherding the the dollars to ensure successful, let's just say, economics of the city from all different levels.
Yes, that
That's correct, right?
That's an accurate assumption. And in fact, one of the main components of both the CARES funding and and continuing on into the the current agreement is that every Arvada business is a beneficiary of these funds and programs. There is not a chamber membership requirement to partake or participate in the various programs and resources that will be deployed.
And that includes nonprofits, because they do have a nonprofit arm at the chamber. So what is there any efforts or thought put into the fact of how to market every organization within the city versus, you know, the chamber members getting a newsletter? How do you get to the non-chamber members?
Yes, and that's a great example of the partnership we have with the city and in the business license records that we have access to, communicating with every licensed business and nonprofit in the city of Arvada, making sure that they are well aware of of the programs and resources available, as well as marketing our community as a whole, as a place, really, when we're thinking about drawing customers and additional resources and you know, public relationship type of focus to to the Arvada business and nonprofit community.
Okay. Mark, if you want to add anything, you can, but he answered all of my questions I had. I think I'm I'm comfortable with them.
Okay, well, the only thing I was gonna add, Bob, is that and and council is that we are reserving a pretty significant amount of the ARPA funds for the to support the regional homeless program. And that, I think you all know, is a is a major effort, and involves the development of a navigation center, affordable housing units associated with that, services that are kind of that are going to be provided as a hub to that, and we have all the cities and the county in Jefferson County that are all part of that, part of that effort. We don't know exactly how much that is going to be. We're still in the process of trying to define that. But it could be somewhere in the vicinity of three or four million dollars when it's all said and done. And so as we look at how we're going to distribute the ARPA funds, we are trying to reserve a healthy amount of that for that regional homeless program.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of Councilman Pfeiffer's questions to you around, you know, feeling like there there should be some guide rails or or priority objectives laid out to how this money is spent. And, you know, you talked about how the need for addressing businesses that are most at risk. So how do how do we get to those businesses, and how do we prioritize that and determine who's most at risk? So I would like to see more detail on that, thinking about, you know, minority and women-owned businesses, for example, and and other areas like that, and how those are going to be prioritized.
Now, what we can do, council members, is return to you either at a workshop or perhaps with some additional information as we sit down with the chamber. The chamber president, CEO Kami Welch, could not be here. She's on vacation. I think she probably would have been able to add some additional background to what Daniel provided, but if that information is something that you would like to see, we can certainly provide that in the future.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mormon? All right, seeing no other hands, Mr. Marriott, you can proceed with your motion.
Thank you. I move the R twenty-two dash zero zero four, resolution approving a subrecipient grant agreement by and between city of Arvada and the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds be approved. And I would I'd like to make a quick comment. I will absolutely be supporting this. I think we are so lucky here in Arvada to have a chamber of commerce of the quality that we have and and of the activity that we have. Further, the nearly two-year-long partnership of the the Recovery Task Force, the Resiliency Task Force, is what this is really about. Is about the partnerships that we've put together here in Arvada to help our business community and help our citizens, frankly, through these difficult times. And the total amount of ARPA funds we're getting is 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 very large. This is only a small part of it. And I would submit that through the Resiliency Task Force, these funds will be deployed in a in another way besides deployed just through local government, and so we'll we'll get into greater depth within the the fabric of our society. we'll we'll get into greater depth within the the fabric of our society. So for those reasons, I'm a hundred percent for this and we'll be voting yes.
Thank you. So motions for approval, Mr. Mormon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Obviously, Mr. Marriott voted yes.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. That motion carries six to zero with the mayor being excused. Thank you, everybody. It was a great discussion. I appreciate the questions. Next, we'll consider R twenty two dash zero zero five, a resolution authorizing a system upgrade purchase agreement by and between the City of Arvada and L three Harris Technologies, Inc. for the upgrade of the Mark Core radio system to SR one zero A dot seven in an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the first year. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Sir Mayor Protem, I should say, members of the council, the information technology is requesting the system upgrade, which will allow us to transition to the current version of the Harris radio system that's critical for security, support and replacement of the hardware. This is actually a joint effort between us and the City of Lakewood, which is through intergovernmental agreement. And the upgrade will actually be actually be split so that that costs us six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that you see in the report is actually going to be split between us and Lakewood at three hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred each. And this will upgrade our 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 security, public safety radio system. Without the upgrade, we would be operating a system that would not work very well and would be substandard. This is an upgrade that will allow us to stay current with the current needs of our public safety radio system, which not only takes care of the police department, also takes care of Arvada Fire and our other municipal services such as streets and and utilities and so forth. So it's a very important upgrade and we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Ms. Rush, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak to this resolution?
We do not.
Great. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I have questions, but I also will make the motion. Has a okay. So questions around this is more edification. So we'll see. We may have it. So when these these things happen around the radio system that's shared, yeah, and I appreciate our partners with Lakewood, but does FIRE put any money into this if they're using the same system? And then the other question is, can we access nine one one funds from Jeffcom for some of this stuff too? Because don't they use our radios to dispatch? I'm just curious.
So I think Aaron's on the call. I don't know if any of those are questions that Aaron is comfortable with answering. I see Laura's popped her camera on. Laura, do you want to answer?
Sure. And I definitely appreciate the question, too. I can at least answer the first one. Arvada Fire does contribute funding to that. There's a separate IGA with them. I don't recall the exact terms off the top of my head, but I can definitely look into those specifics if need be.
As long as they're contributing, I think that's good, Laura. I just want to make sure we're not shouldering all of the expenses when there's another government agency using our our same systems.
Sure. No, yeah, they're definitely contributing as well. And then the nine one one fund, I'm not sure with about those. And then I am online with Aaron here.
Well, if we can, if you don't mind, not that it would change anything in the motion here, I I think it would be good to understand how we access additional funding to support our dispatch system. You know, nine one one does get a lot of money from all of our cell phones and landlines and everything else. Any additional funds to defray asset management of communications is an expensive thing. And if we can access some of those funds to keep that up, that would be great.
So that's a that's some information that we can follow up with council on if you'd like. I know that a lot of our nine, a lot of the nine one one funds countywide are going towards Jeffcom. But we can certainly find out and answer questions of as to as to what if any of the nine one one funds are going towards these kinds of.
Yeah, equipment. I mean, I agree. That brings a good point, Mark, not to we're digressing a little bit, but do those nine one ones, maybe some more information around nine one one funds? Does it kind of defer some of our expenses to Jeffcom? I I don't know what I can't recall off the top of our head what we contribute for Jeffcom, but you know, maybe some more information around nine one one funding and how does that work and how do we? How do we as our community benefit from it versus it just all going to Jeffcom? There could be indirect funding, but I think we need to keep an eye on some of those additional fun funding sources out there for for either asset management and or operating expenses when it comes to Jeffcom. Cool. No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other hands, Mr. Pfeiffer, you can proceed with the motion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move that resolution twenty two dash zero zero five, a resolution authorizing a system upgrade purchase agreement by and between the City of Arvada and L three Harris Technologies, Inc. for the upgrade of the Mark Core radio system to SR ten eight dot seven in the amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in the first year be approved.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Ms. Simpson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Fiver, Pfeiffer? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Mr. Mormon?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with Mary Williams being excused. We'll move on now. We have no ordinances on first reading tonight, so we'll move now into our public hearing. So now I open the public hearing for Council Bill twenty one dash zero four four, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities of Arvada, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, Golden, Westminster and Edgewater for the Arvada, excuse me, for the animal shelter dog licensing funding ordinance numbered forty seven ninety one. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Deputy City Manager Lori Gillis will walk us through a brief presentation regarding this proposed IGA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Good evening, council, Mayor Protem. As stated tonight before you, is the updated intergovernmental agreement for animal shelter licensing funding for the Foothills Animal Shelter. I want to thank the Foothills Animal Shelter staff and Foothills Animal Shelter Board and legal departments of the participating agencies for coming together to update this intergovernmental agreement. The county's legal department took the lead, but for the city, Laura Hemler was the lead and worked with other agencies to get this to work for Arvada. She is on the Zoom tonight and saw her a few minutes ago, and she can answer questions as well. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the intergovernmental agreement is between the seven participating agencies listed. Foothills Animal Shelter does have a great team and including many volunteers. We've have a very functional board in that we challenge each other, we dig in, we ask questions, and we bring different talents to the table. We have finance people, we have public safety members, and we also have agency leaders on the board. The purpose of the agreement, what's included is the facility construction, the debt service, the debt financing, the certificates of participation that were issued, dog licensing, shelter operations, animal management and court support. This agreement was last modified in August of two thousand twelve. Next slide, please. The key changes that are included as the shelters evolved, some of the operating practices and timelines have advanced. It's fair to say we've been in compliance, but the board and staff wanted clarity in the language. The funding formula and calculations have also been modified as they were not feasible as written specifically. The language provides clarity. It still includes a twenty percent goal for licensing. As of October, Arvada's licensing rate was at sixteen percent. The license, the compliance rate are based on a calculation that's based on estimated dog population. If this and the target rate is twenty percent and how the calculation works, if we achieve more than twenty percent, the direct assessment that comes to the city is lower. So it's very much an incentive for us to beat that twenty percent. But it's really challenging. We did drop in our compliance rates as we moved into the pandemic. I will also share that the shelter is taking on dog licensing in the future, and we believe that's an opportunity to increase that licensing percentage. Another part of the agreement that needed to be updated is the licensing calendar dot did not match the budget calendar and the budget calendar for the shelter didn't align well with the agency calendars. So the the timing of some items was changed also in the intergovernmental agreement. Next slide, please. Again, the inner the agency, the intergovernmental agreement provides for agency representation on the board. I am serving as treasurer. I served as president in the past. We have monthly board meetings. We have regular conversations if any issues arise. And the board approves the budget. So we do have influence. We have oversight of the expenditures of the shelter. Looking back to twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, operations, capital and maintenance, the city contributed about a hundred and seventy one thousand and debt services about eighty one thousand. I rounded those numbers. We also have a very strong partnership with our animal management officers. Next slide, please. Also want to speak to the Friends of the Foothills Animal Shelter. They have a very strong nonprofit organization. They are active fundraisers. You may or may not have heard from them on Colorado Gift Day, but they are out in the community quite a bit. They've done a fantastic job. They have a thirteen member board, although that number's gone up, so it may be higher at this time. This past year, under the leadership of Connie Howard, their executive director, they went through a thorough strategic planning process. That strategic plan will be out on their website. But they are very focused in their work and what their plans are. There was a lot of community engagement in that strategic planning process. Heather, I am forgetting her last name, who worked with us on strategic planning, also worked the animal shelter.
Heather Bergman.
Bergen?
Oh, thank you. Okay, appreciate that. She was there and she led a great process and my apologies to Heather because she did a fantastic job. And they do a lot with their budget and accountability, monthly reports, lots of the questions related to their budget and financial management. And they are also looking at data. So I'm a big fan of being data driven and they've really upped their game in that area. And with that, I can see we have some questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gillis, for that. But before we go to council comments or questions, I will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. Ms. Rush, do we have any member of the public that'd like to speak to this?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I lost my words there at the end. So I'll close the public portion, public comment portion of the hearing and open it up for council member actions or questions. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I actually have no questions. This is a great program, so I was simply going to request the motion.
Okay, you can reserve the motion. Are any other council members? I see no hands up, so Ms. Simpson, you can carry on with your motion.
All right, one second. Let me just pull up my document here. All right. I move that CB twenty one dash zero forty four, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities of Arvada, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, Golden, Westminster and Edgewater for animal shelter dog licensing funding be approved. Final reading numbered four seven nine one and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Ms. Simpson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion passes six to zero with the mayor being excused. Thank you, everybody, for that and thank you for the for the presentation, Ms. Gillis. Next on our agenda is our second public comment time. Ms. Rush, do we have anyone signed up for public comment now?
We do not.
Thank you very much. So now I will move to our city council member reports or comments. And I know that several of you have several things to say, which is which is great. So I don't see any hands up. Okay, Lauren, I'm sorry, Ms. Simpson, you can go first.
Okay, David, Mayor Protem. So I I know that many of us are going to express our deepest sympathies for the victims of the Marshall Fire. It is extremely heartbreaking what has happened. I certainly know that here in Arvada on the night of the thirtieth, we were on pins and needles as a council and as a city staff watching the flames and just praying that the winds didn't shift south and that our own city would be so horribly impacted. We were lucky that night, but many of our neighbors were not. And that breaks all of our hearts. We all know people who have been impacted by the fire. We all know people who have lost their homes, lost their resources. And it's not just about a house, but it's about the memories that are associated in those homes, about the hopes and the dreams. So our hearts are deeply extended to those in the communities of Superior and Lafayette and beyond. And everyone who loves them, everyone touched by this. As a part of it, we are all looking for ways to help, you know, we have incredible city staffs who help certainly with all the logistics. Huge, huge commendation to Arvada Fire and Arvada Police who have been helping in litany of ways, including with the evacuations, with fighting the flames, with helping with the transportation, helping with the resource centers and so much else. So thank you to the all of their brave efforts. And as a small means of trying to contribute, council member Smith and I were talking about what we could do. I don't want to steal her thunder, but she is a disaster expert, so to speak. She does disaster recovery for a living and works for an organization called Team Rubicon that has work that is working with Boulder Office of Emergency Management to assist in the disaster recovery. And what Lisa could see on the ground and was confirmed by the leaders of the of the efforts is that the donation centers are full. You know, we we did a quick donation call on the morning of the thirty first and the response was absolutely overwhelming. Councilmember Smith's garage is still full, I believe, as we slowly try to move those items out. And so just seeing the generous spirit of our people, we we asked ourselves, what what do they really need right now? And what they need is the resources to be able to start to rebuild their lives in the short term. Obviously, long term efforts are going to take a long time and there are going to be charities and municipal governments and FEMA all there to help. But right now, people just want to worry about dinner and getting some clothes and getting their kids back to school and things of that nature and trying to establish a little bit of normalcy without emptying their bank accounts. And so that's what we're doing. We're doing a gift card drive. We partnered with the Arvada Chamber. They and the Arvada Resiliency Task Force, which I know viewers of this meeting saw a lot of earlier today or earlier in this meeting. And so you can drop any gift card, particularly hardware stores, grocery stores, clothing stores, local restaurants where people can just go to eat without having to stress about how they're going to cook dinner. Many people right now don't even have kitchens. And so that way, people can begin to fi- focus on their unique needs, where they're going to go. And you can drop those gift cards at the Chamber of Commerce office at on Branview Avenue. I believe that's seventy three oh five Branview at between business hours this week and next week, as well as at the Arvada United Methodist Church at sixty eighth and Carr between nine and four during business hours. And I've been working with council members in other cities to try and help bring them on board with this program. And so I'm really excited and hopefully we can do something good for the Marshall Fire victims. I know several of my other council members would like to say something, too, so I'm gonna stop there.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. I appreciate that. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and and thank you, Councilmember Simpson and Councilmember Smith for all your work in organizing this and, of course, Councilmember Smith for your work with Team Rubicon. I really, really appreciate it. While the the traumatic events on on December thirtieth affected our community, but obviously even was more traumatic for our neighbors to the north, Superior and Lewisville. I have close friends who lost their home in Lewisville and coworkers who were lucky to keep their homes, but their neighbors were not so lucky. So it is is a really rough time right up there. And so I think all the support that we can do as a community to help them is is so needed right now. And I know that we will step up and do that. So I'm very, very appreciative of everyone's work. And I, like many of you, woke up Friday morning trying to think what we could do. And so I really appreciate, again, the organization that has happened, come together in this effort. Along with the gift cards, also want to direct people to the Boulder Office of Emergency Management website. When you go there, there's an emergency status you can click on right at the top, and that will allow you to see all the different resources that people can participate in as far as making donations, signing up to volunteer. I understand that there's no need right now for volunteers, but there will be. And so you can go ahead and sign up for that and they will notify you when those opportunities arise. I understand that there's no need right now for volunteers, but there will be, and so you can go ahead and sign up for that, and they will notify you when those opportunities arise. Of course, the collection of the gift cards is also a huge help. Um, this is a time for us to come together and support our neighbors, but it's also a time to realize this fire is, is not a wake-up call. Um, and like my friend and boss, uh, Suzanne Jones puts it, it's a gut punch. And these disasters are gonna keep happening again and again. And so I, you know, I feel very strongly that we cannot be complacent about climate change and its impacts that's having on us right now and in the near future. We really must, as a community, get serious and be part of the solution. We have to come together as Arvadans and rally to address this threat head-on. And I think that there are several ways we can do that, and we have some great um, programs in place and different um, community groups that are working on this. So I think just tapping into those resources and really, and then working with them. We need a climate action plan for our community that outlines short and long-term actions we will take for mitigation, adaptation, and resiliency. However, we're gonna reduce our risk to fire and flood and looking at that, looking at how to improve the health and resiliency of our community. So I would like to see, as we prepare to update our comprehensive plan, um, tasking our resiliency task force and sustainability advisory committee to come up with recommendations to reduce fire risk and mitigate climate change impacts. Things like our land development decisions we make impact our climate change preparedness, such as our transportation system, density of development, defensible buffer zones and flood zones. So I think we need more guidance in our regulations and land use codes to um, with regards to climate change. So I look forward with look, working with council and the city team on taking some proactive measures and planning now. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, um, now I forgot why I rose my finger, my hand, um, since uh, my council members before me got me all thinking. Um, you know, you know, council member Mormon and Simpson and even Smith and a few of us have discussed, we talk about the environment itself. I, I kind of want to even highlight resiliency at a different perspective. You know, Old Town sits at about fifty-three hundred feet above uh, sea level. And the northwestern part of our city, not including the exact uh, foothills going up the hill, but Highway seventy-two and ninety-three, which is Candellas, is at sixty-nine hundred feet. There's over fourteen hundred foot elevation differences between our community. And part of this resiliency is not just only thinking about, you know, even the recent fire that I could watch from my back door and see how close it truly was to that part of the community. But, you know, I want to remind that, you know, that we've talked as a city, it is even a different in the winter operation side of our city. And, and we need to stay focused that we have a city that's at a point of forty square miles that have different needs and different demands to retain that resiliency. And, you know, I would encourage through our thoughtful process of strategies and guidance to the city is that we need to continue focusing on those unique needs to different parts of the city. I can look at every one of my council member peers in their districts and see a uniqueness to your own district, and that we continue to look at the resiliency of those, those parts of the city. As much as, you know, uh, sometimes uh, we don't always realize, maybe the city doesn't realize that one part of the city could be completely dry while the other part of the city is overwhelmed with feats of snow. One part of the city could be on the edge of a disaster like we experienced last week with our, our friends and communities north of us, literally on the cusp of our city, to areas that can get flooded like that in Old Town Arvada. Uh, you know, if we don't take those mitigations. I know we, I know that the city does a great job with resiliency. Um, we need to continue to look at the depth, breadth, and, and width of that conversation, and making sure not only from a climate perspective, uh, and an economic perspective, but from a serviceability perspective, and uh, the ability to recover quickly from any type of natural disaster. So it, I'm sure it's on all our forethought. It's something that doesn't necessarily have to be said, but we just need to highlight that even uh, elevation changes of that dramatic have dramatic uh, environmental impacts. I will make just a quick in uh, uh, note, we should look at considering greening the fleet as well. Um, I don't know if we put enough effort into that, you know? I had mixed thoughts about it, you know, working for the state. The governor has made a lot of effort to greening the, the uh, the, the fleet. There is some, some areas that I think we can benefit from, like electric sweepers, electric vehicles, and I know we have our bold doing uh, code in, or um, parking enforcement. Uh, there is police departments now starting to use Teslas and other vehicles to uh, green uh, their police department as well. And there's a lot of vehicles where, as a Ford is changing most of their fleet in the upcoming years. Um, I would like to start seeing, you know, as I tag along with my peers here, uh, some strategies around that, and maybe that's something I know we'll be talking soon with strategic planning around the corner, but this is maybe something we need to at least start having the conversation around uh, of how can the city further itself? I'll tell you, from a solar perspective and renewable energy, the city has done a remarkable job in this area, but now we just need to look at what is the next step. So the last thing I want to add is, thank you for letting me have all the thoughtful conversation tonight and all my questions, because one of my main purposes tonight was to make sure that Mayor Pro Tem earned his extra fifty bucks a month tonight, because I didn't want him to have only a twenty-minute meeting. We wanted to make sure at least we got one hour for his payment for tonight. So thank you for entertaining my questions, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. I appreciate that. Uh, very good questions. Uh, before I make my remarks, I just want to make sure that Councilmember Marriott or Councilmember Smith, uh, you have any, anything that you want to say. Uh, Councilmember Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say you did a great job in uh, hurting all of us during this meeting, so, so well done. But uh, also just echoing a lot of the sentiments that we're hearing, and I, I really do appreciate the conversation around why we're seeing fires in December. Uh, never in my life would I thought I would see a winter wonderland of snow and fire coming up in these little pockets. That, that is something I would never have expected, and it really just isn't a testament to the longevity of some of these wildfire seasons, these flood seasons, and, and the strength and, and how impactful it can be. But we're talking at a, at a macro level and policy level about how we can impact climate change and how we can do better in our community, but I also just want to remind the, the community that we can also be resilient at an individual level. So understanding what uh, what you can do on your property to help mitigate some of those wildfires. How can you be ready when an emergency happens? We got a pre-evacuation notice. How many people actually know what that means or what to do with that? So I think it's really important to educate the community on top of what we're doing a, at a city level on, on some of that, you know, turning our fleet green, great, but also when an emergency happens, how are we preparing our community on an individual level as well? So just want to, just put that little bug in everyone's ear about that. So thanks for that time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Smith.
Mayor Pro Tem, can I, can I make a comment to Lisa's statement there? Uh, you're right, that pre-evac, I will tell you, I got that, and I'll tell you, no one knew what to do. People either abandoned their house immediately, or like I did, I walked in and I had four hundred suitcases at my front door, um, and within two minutes of that email uh, or that text. So I think you're right, there needs to be more education. I haven't seen that happen before, that we really need to probably make some asserted effort around uh, the evacuation or pre-evacuation. What does it mean? What are some things to think about during it, during these times? Um, I think the city has a role in communicating with its constituents on preparation uh, around some of these, these things, especially when it's completely unpredictable. And me too, you know, as well, went up there, and it's amazing to see fire when there's snow on top of it. It, we did a drive-through, and I, I, I would never have thought you could see disaster in a war zone like that, where you have snow and fire happening in the same place. And um, it, it's a scary time. Um, I agree. Um, and you're right, we can all do it individually, and I just want to underscore that as well. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. And again, I just, like, uh, like everyone else has said, it's a, it, it makes you stop and think um, about kind of life in general, and we received the pre-evacuation notice. I actually use it as an opportunity. I've got two sons, uh, twenty-one and nineteen, and use it as an opportunity to sit down with them and uh, teach them as best I could, right? And when they're nineteen and twenty-one, of things to consider as they grow up, and, and if, if in fact they ever in a situation like that, um, what to do and how to, how to kind of navigate through that scary moment, because it is, it's, it's fight or flight. And everybody has different emotions and how they respond and react um, to those kinds of things. And so I can only imagine um, the, the terror that ripped through the entire community in that pre-evacuation notice. But again, thinking about, you know, those who uh, were evacuated and those who ultimately lost everything, uh, my heart breaks for them. Um, on Friday, I was uh, uh, able to participate in Metro Mayor's Emergency Management Call in the absence of Ms., of, of Mayor Williams. And I learned quite a bit um, through that, that um, the, it's amazing to see um, the different communities and towns and the mayors ultimately come together um, in, in crisis. And the things that uh, that they focus on and the opportunities um, that will be ahead of us in this crisis to provide service and volunteerism and money and food and clothes and all the things that Councilmember Simpson was speaking to. But the thing that I learned that I took away most from that uh, call was, and again, I'm not, I'm not um, a, a self-subscribed prof- uh, professional when it comes to the emergency management crisis, but there was four things I took away from it that, as they talked about um, any type of disaster, um, there's obviously the, the, the search and rescue to prevent as much loss of life as possible. And in these stages, they go through these, and then they go in and they stabilize the area. Uh, and then they go in and do what is called a damage assessment, and typically that happens within the first twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And that actually began very quickly, um, from what I've been, from what I was told on Friday. And then the last phase of kind of this assessment is the debris management, and that's really where um, they're able to wrap their arms around what's needed. Um, and from the city's perspective, I was able to provide um, to them just kind of a, a, a list of things that um, that from the city of Arvada, we might be able to do to help, which includes, you know, municipal inspections, building inspections, um, engineering resources, um, various forms of heavy equipment, uh, utilities assistance and utilities assistance, um, you know, from people to supplies. Uh, obviously, we've, we've already started with our mutual aid with regard to our police and fire. And so um, there are, there are and will be uh, many, many opportunities for us to participate, um, both as a council and as a city and as individuals who um, live and reside in the city of Arvada. We have an amazing um, city, and it, and it is amazing to see the outpouring of, of love um, that people give in these types of situations. And, you know, we uh, were recipients of that in June, um, when we had a terrific event in our city, and, and now it's our opportunity to give that back. One of the asks that came from uh, the Metro Mayor's Emergency Management Meeting was, um, it was identified that obviously cash is most important right now, and, and how those cities can use that cash. But um, we were asked as um, uh, representatives of our city to come back to our city councils and, and ask for the ability to provide a donation of a thousand dollars um, to the um, uh, I believe it will go to the Boulder, Mr. Mormon, you referenced the website, and I can't, all of a sudden, I can't remember the name of it. Um, but the Boulder County, will you say it, please?
Boulder Office of Emergency, oh boy, now you put me on the spot.
Boulder Office of Emergency Management.
Yes, thank you very much. And so um, and, and Ms. Morris, do we need, I mean, is this a, should we take a vote on this? How do we, how do we provide the city staff? Or Mr. Mr. Devon, do you have the authority to let me say to do that?
Uh, let, let's make this really simple. One thousand dollars is something that can be covered under my authority easily. If uh, if y'all shake your head yes, I'll get that done.
Okay. I see all of our heads shaking enthusiastically. Um, obviously, a thousand dollars um, is uh, is a very simple request, and I was uh, and I, I obviously responded on that call, and I would come back uh, to council and ask uh, for your support on that as well, and I appreciate, appreciate each of you um, and your support. And obviously, there will be an opportunity, as I mentioned, for, for us to be uh, way more involved in, in what um, recovery looks like um, and feels like for uh, those affected communities. So with that, uh, Mr. Devon, do you have anything to add this evening?
I don't have anything to add regarding, uh, well, actually, I, I, I do want to let the city council know that we are um, engaged right now with um, an organization called Co-Warn, which is basically a, a collaborative of the um, of the regional utilities in the state. Um, and um, I think it's likely at some point in time that we'll be uh, lending some people uh, and uh, material resources to uh, the utility services in Superior, um, and possibly Lewisville and Lafayette as well, uh, that have been harmed by the uh, by the recent events. So um, our utilities director, Sharon Israel, is uh, having conversations with um, uh, emergency management, uh, the Emergency Management Network, our resilience coordinator, Melissa Ryder, is also plugged in. Um, and they're both keeping Lori and I informed in terms of uh, actions that they may take. And if, when those actions are defined, uh, we will uh, well, we'll turn them loose and, and let them do what they need to do to help our neighbors.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Morris, anything from you tonight?
Anything from me, Your Honor?
Well, thank you very much, uh, everyone. Thank you for uh, the thoughtful conversations and opportunities to serve uh, in this great city. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.